Dr. Ready, ready?
Whoa.
That's loud. Okay. We hereby reconvene the July 5th meeting and the July 6th meeting of the Palm Springs City Council. City Clerk, since we're in a new -- we've reconvened, would you do us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Coors?
Here.
Councilmember Mills? I see he's here. Councilmember Roberts?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Fouts?
Here.
Mayor Moon?
Here.
All present?
Thank you very much. The first item is a continuance from the meeting of July 5th, and that is a discussion of Item 5A, which is review, appoint, and/or reappoint city council subcommittees and other appointments.
Shouldn't we move that to the end?
Kathy told me to do it first.
No, I'm just giving Ginny a hard time.
Because Eddie told me to do it first. Yes, I do. Yes, they're all up there for them also.
You knew we were doing this.
Yeah, but I thought we were doing it after.
No, no, don't move.
I mean, I'm staged, so it doesn't matter.
Oh, you think for all of it? Oh, okay.
Okay, the recommendation is to review, appoint, and/or reappoint city council subcommittees and other appointments, and delete any subcommittees and other appointments no longer needed. Do we have any staff report on this? Dr. Ready?
No, Mayor, what we'd like to do is have you review if you look, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that are actually expiring.
David, just a second. Since we're reconvening procedurally, do I have to do public comments again? No, we didn't.
You do not, not for purposes of this agenda.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Ready, please proceed.
The items, the ones highlighted in yellow are the actual subcommittees that are expiring, so those must be renewed if, in fact, you care to do so.
But could I suggest, if we can do it quickly, some of these we might want to just get rid of, even if they're not expiring, because we have, like, 50 pages of subcommittees and some of them don't meet, so sort of the goal is to, I think, get rid of some of them?
Should we just walk through them really fast?
Yes.
Starting with.
Okay, fundraising.
We should keep that going.
Keep it.
Affordable housing?
Keep it.
Keep it.
Rules of procedure and conduct of city council meetings?
Why don't we sunset that? Well, actually, that ends 12 -- leave that.
We'll keep it until, just in case.
That'll sunset properly.
Okay.
Okay, that sunsets. Medical cannabis, yeah.
That'll sunset.
Audiovisual system upgrade, that's going to sunset.
No, it's going to sunset, but we should extend it through the end of September.
Going back to medical cannabis, could I make a suggestion that the council think about adding adult use to the portfolio for that subcommittee?
I think we have a standing, these are ad-hocks, right?
Yes, you do have a standing, but there's going to be ordinance issues that, on the fly, might be very helpful to handle.
Sure.
With respect to adult use.
Just change that to just cannabis?
Cannabis ordinance.
Yeah, I would say cannabis ordinances and regulatory activity.
Do we have the standing ones, too?
That's what's coming.
I like what he said. Cannabis ordinance and regulatory activity, that's great.
That'll be helpful for Dr. Ready and myself, because we'll be looking to provide sort of on-the-ground, on-site activity. I had a call from one of our collectives today asking a question about can I do X and Y in the same room?
Great, let's just do it.
Okay. Audiovisual system upgrade, we're going to change the date on that?
We just, Chris, I think we should extend that to the end, end of September.
End of September. Recognition of Lawrence Crosley.
Where is that?
Well, we haven't met on that, and that is something that...
Hey, Ginny, let's keep it till the end of December, let's make that our deadline.
Okay.
So let that sunset normally.
Information technology.
I would recommend that the master, I would leave that till the end of the year.
Okay. Palm Springs International Film Festival.
Can I go back to that one, though? Is that, has that committee met?
It has not, and where we were is Aaron needed to get actually an assessment of where the depart, what he needs, and he's just about there before we started talking about the master plan, so I would, in the fall, that's when we would, we would come back with some suggestions.
It just seemed to me that that's a, that's a staff issue. Why is there a subcommittee on that? Because it's a staff issue, and it should come back to the council at some point when you've got the master plan.
Probably a good point.
Well, I couldn't argue with that.
You don't need us.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. We can remove that.
We're unneeded.
Take that one off. Okay, Palm Springs International Film Festival.
We probably need to look at that contract this year, right?
Yeah, yes, actually, the contract needs to be renewed, so we need to keep that.
Palm Springs Dog Park, I think that's just an ongoing thing, so can't the council just do that generally?
That's done.
A year ago.
Oh.
That's complete.
So pull it?
Pull it.
That's complete.
Strategic planning retreat, we're not doing those anymore, are we?
That's complete.
So we can pull both of those.
Right.
Governmental reform, ethics, and transparency.
We still have a couple things, so we should keep that, but it'll be done by the end of the year.
Okay. Sign ordinance revision.
We finished that a year ago, we're just waiting.
Wait for what?
I think planning commission and come back to council, I have no idea where it is.
How much more, how much more time, Flynn, do you think we need on that?
Well, the temporary sign ordinance is going to be on the 19th, the regular full one is going to be your first meeting in September.
But you don't need the subcommittee anymore. We're done.
You did not send it back to planning, is my recollection. You gave us direction.
But the subcommittee can end on it?
Yes, could go away.
I thought, didn't we send it back to planning to come up with the design review process?
You sent that to the planning director to come back with it.
The planning director, yes.
So guess what? We can end that.
Well, unless you want to look at 12-foot signs.
Well, that we can do.
All right, all right, we're, the train just blew off the tracks.
Okay.
City landscaping?
Go away with that. City Hall landscape?
There's, that program has sort of ended, there is no plans at this point unless council wants us to sort of resurrect it. It was a, it was a multimillion-dollar project.
Well, that...
What do you want to do, Chris? I say end it.
So we have a plan that we looked at, you and I did not look at it, but Mr. Lewin and I did previously, and you haven't seen it, and we don't have any, we have no funding, so...
I'd say let's kill it for now.
Okay.
Or can it just go dormant?
We can just get...
We can reconstitute it if we need to.
Okay.
Okay, vacant building and lot, David?
We need that.
Yes, sir.
Is that just a staff function you're working on, and you'll come to the full council on it?
Yes.
Do we need a subcommittee on that?
No.
What, on the landscaping?
No, no, we moved past that.
Vacant buildings.
Bottom of the page.
No, no, it's coming to the full committee, we don't need a subcommittee.
Yeah, we don't need that.
That can go.
Cool.
Okay, so that's all...
That's fabulous.
Is that all we have?
No.
We have like 60. Oh, I only have one page.
Oh, here, share.
No, no.
That looks more like it.
And we have externals.
That was, that was all we had on that one.
No, we have Indian Canyon improvements, there's another page.
No, I don't have the other page.
His is two-sided, mine's one-sided.
Yeah, we don't have this.
See, mine's two-sided.
I should have brought mine with me, I left it on my desk.
You want me to call them out? Because I have the page.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go.
So the next one is the Indian Canyon improvements, we need to hold on to that. Ginny, that expires, that's you and I, and it expires the end of the year.
We have a meeting coming up on that.
You want to, let's leave that for now, just the way it is. Walk of Stars, we better hold that till the end of the year, they're coming back in September, I think. Non-motorized transportation plan, that's Coors and Roberts, that expires the end of the year, you think we'll be done?
I think we're done for now, right? Marcus, is there anything else on that we need to do in the short term?
I prefer you keep it, because we have the final phase coming up between...
So Marcus, that naturally sunsetted the end of the year. You want more?
That's fine.
Okay. Coachella Valley CV Link, that's Fouts and Mills, and that was going to sunset the end of the year.
I think we need that still.
So you want to extend it another year? So you want to extend it another year?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, what page are you on now?
I'm on the one none of you have.
There's like four pages, so now I have...
What's the bottom of the page number?
Page six.
Ninety?
Six.
Or six?
Six.
Yeah, depending on how you look at it. So you all have it now? Six, it says six at the bottom, or ninety?
Okay.
So are we all together?
So we didn't, we didn't do, oh, those are ad-hocks, okay.
Not yet. So we were at the CV Link. You want to extend that a year? It was supposed to sunset this year.
I think we need to extend it, yes.
So to eighteen? Twelve of eighteen? Historic Site Preservation Code Review, that's Roberts and Mills, we've never met on this, Chris.
Do you need to?
We've never met.
Excuse me, Mr. Counsel. They can renew it for another year at this point?
What, Chris?
Excuse me, never mind.
We have not, you're right.
I've got it marked up for two years, just...
Well, what do you want to do? Do you want to meet on it? Talk about it?
Good.
All right, why don't we leave it to end this year, and if we need to extend it, we'll extend it, okay?
So change the date to the seventeen, to twelve?
No, right now it expires the end of the year.
Yeah.
So we're going to leave it for now.
It expires in eighteen.
No, seventeen.
Okay, I have a list now. Okay, Historic Site Preservation Code Review?
Keep.
Keep it?
Yep.
Historic Plaza Theater, I think we have a lot of work.
We need to keep that.
That should get extended a year. That's not going anywhere.
Water conservation, review and advice city staff?
That can go away, Mayor.
Okay, water conservation goes away. Measure J Commission Ordinance, review and ordinance and duties of the Measure J Commission?
I think we keep that, since we're waiting to hear back from the commission on some changes.
Yep, Downtown Palm Springs Park?
But they, wait a minute, that could come to the whole...
Yeah, that can come to the whole.
Yeah, we don't need it.
We don't need the Measure J.
I don't think we need it.
Got that?
Downtown Palm Springs Park?
We need to keep that for a while, I would extend that, I would actually extend that a year.
Can you extend that? Council?
To 2018.
Any problem extending it?
Nope.
Okay. Library remodel expansion, oye, we've got a long ways to go on that.
That's not a year, that's forever.
Let's extend that into the new millennium.
I mean, is there a reason for a subcommittee right now on that?
Thank you for, thank you for laughing, nobody else heard it.
Actually, that's going to just have to be a full council discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we'll do away with that. Sustainability?
No, no need for that any longer, Mayor.
Okay, College of the Desert?
I would extend, I would keep, I would extend that, actually.
Yeah, because hopefully they'll be doing something soon. Special events?
Wait, how long extending it, a year?
I would do a year, yes.
Yeah, I think they'll have, they'll do something within a year.
College of the Desert, a year.
Special events?
I'd like, I'd like to weigh in on that. Special events is a process that I'm going to be advocating that you move aggressively on with respect to some of the, the annual things that happen in our city, and I don't think we'll be done with it by December.
Do you need a subcommittee, though?
I, no, I don't think so.
Well, wait, Eddie, do you want a subcommittee to work with on that?
I really would appreciate it.
And you probably need it because of your newness.
A subcommittee to work on what?
To assist with special event process and special event permitting.
I'm willing to keep that alive.
So that's a different...
I'll do it.
That's a different description than exists, so maybe we should make the description what you want, because it's not reviewing events to ensure the...
No, absolutely not, it's just the concept of a special event permit process that is overhauled.
So let's change that to that.
Let's extend it a year, and will you give it a new title?
Yeah, to fit what you want.
Special event permit process.
Okay, that would, that makes sense.
Business retention.
That can go away.
Oh, I thought you needed to meet with us.
Well, after, it can go away after December, but we do need, well, at least one more meeting.
Okay, so keep it for now, but we won't renew it.
Okay, property negotiations.
What page are we going to?
We're going to page four.
Yeah, page four.
Oh, no, I don't have page four.
Yes. Here we go.
I can share, I can share.
Okay, property negotiations, assist with property negotiations, and four-four or nine?
We need that, we just created that one.
That's new, okay. Potential 2017 ballot measures?
Create, keep, working.
Hockus Creek Golf Course operation?
Keep it.
Keep it. Communications?
Keep.
Keep. Vision Agua Caliente, we should probably keep that.
That sounds like a standing committee, it's going to be for decades.
Well, they've got some stuff coming up.
No, but, yes.
But it's an ad hoc.
It's an ad hoc for now, it's fine.
So you want to make it a standing?
No, you can keep it ad hoc until...
I would, I would say that there are some time urgent tasks with the tribe that warrant keeping it an ad hoc.
Okay.
After we get through compact negotiations, perhaps we can think about something else.
Okay, Oswett Canyon.
I think we can get rid of that now, right?
Let's kill that.
Kill it. Andaz Hotel Development.
Keep it.
Joint Powers Agreement.
Get rid of it, I think we're done.
Yeah.
Well, could we go back to Andaz, that's, actually, that, it does, it has expired, how long do you want to continue that?
No, it's 12, 17.
No, December 31st.
Seventeen.
It goes to December 31st?
Oh, thank you.
I know we're moving sort of fast.
Joint Powers Agreement for the CVVA, we're good with CVV.
Keep it?
No, get rid of it.
Plan, the P, plan, oh, planned district development, that's...
PDD till the end of the year, so extend it until the, the end of the year.
Eddie, is it the end of the year on that one? Vacation rentals?
Let's keep that till the end of the year.
End of the year, as the ordinance gets tweaked, yeah.
Solid Waste Franchise Agreement.
So Marcus, Marcus on this one?
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep that.
We haven't met yet, so...
I'd like to extend that personally till the end of the year.
If you want to extend solid waste, we will extend solid waste.
Can we also do something again now with this air blowing down on us? Can you turn off the blower?
Okay, Wellwood Outdoor Landscaping, I think we're almost done with that. Chris, did you think December 31st? No, I don't know.
Why are we stuck there?
We had a meeting recent, not too long ago. Yeah, we'll keep that to the end of the year.
Chris, will you mic up?
If they're keeping that one.
Street naming.
That's complete?
That's done.
That was for the downtown street?
So it's Museum Way Museum Drive Museum Road and Museum Annex?
It's where museum meets museum at the museum.
Okay, annexations and land acquisitions.
Sounds like a movie.
We do need that to continue.
Okay, Palm Canyon slash Desert Arts Center, review of potential use agreements for the city facility.
And let's meet right after our budget subcommittee meeting that we have, so, because it's the mayor and I, and we can get that done.
Okay, that's all the ad-hocks.
So do you want to do standing or externals?
Let's do standing.
Standing, because it's on the back of the page. Finance budget, that's obviously has to stay. Buzztrolley, probably...
Is that a standing, really? Okay.
Cannabis, that's obviously just starting.
Can I ask a question about this? We're keeping the committees, are we also making the decision that who's on those committees wants to stay?
Yes, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think so, because after the election, when we have a new council in December, we can look at, we'll be looking at assignments.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody still wants their positions.
Other than solid waste, no.
Maybe, you know, I'd like us to examine external organization appointments.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Trails, homelessness, IHUBs.
Trails has not met.
IHUB, C-VAG.
That one we need to keep, because it, the subcommittee will become active starting in the fall.
Which one?
The IHUB, C-VAG.
Depends how the budget goes.
Well, I go to those meetings.
What is the trails? Why do we have a standing committee on trails?
Well, we've met, never.
Because Jeff and I met 30 times on that.
Never.
Never.
Do we need a standing committee on trails yet?
I don't even know what it's for.
No, okay. Done.
Done.
IHUB, C-VAG, I go to that one, except the last one, they had one that was in India the day of a city council meeting, I said forget that. Vacation rentals?
Yeah, I mean, this is sort of oversight, vacation rentals, that's a standing.
That's, that's got to stay standing for now.
We had an ad hoc, too.
We have an ad hoc just to do the ordinance.
Okay.
But this is sort of standing, and I think we...
We've got to keep this alive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Internals.
External, wow, there's a lot of them. We obviously have to keep that one.
Well, we, we have, we can't get rid of any of the external organizations.
No, do we want to shift any people?
Yeah, well, that's, that I think is a good discussion. I want to have another discussion here, and that's a discussion about what is our role as members of these committees? Because for instance, I sit on, like, several of these external committees, and it's a lot of work and a lot of studying and a lot of decision-making, and then when it comes to the executive committee, I want to, I want to know what our obligation is and what our responsibility is as a city and as an, as a member of that committee. I think it's a waste of my time if I sit on these committees, do all the studying, do all the work, and then I, the vote, the executive committee is not how I voted. And I don't know if anybody else feels that way, I'd like to have that discussion.
Well, I mean, I think it, for me, that is an issue, and I've been trying to think about this since the last executive committee meeting, because I think the position of Mayor Protem Fote on CV Link oversight, who worked on it, was different than the mayors at the executive committee, and so how do we make that fit? On whether we should have that oversight board and whether Rancho Mirage and Indian Wells should be part of it? So I think that's a good question, and what was striking me in thinking about it is if the person who's working on the policy committee votes a certain way, that should be the city's position, unless someone brings to council a motion to have the city have a different position. Because otherwise, we end up having the person who goes to a year of meetings, working on this and knowing it, not have that position upheld without a discussion of council, or everything needs to come to council. I'm not sure what the right way to do it is, but I think we need to figure that out.
The key is agreement on whoever is sent, that it is verbatim. The position of the city is verbatim.
But how do we get the position of the city, I think is the question? Do we all have to vote on everything that a policy committee does that goes to executive committee? Or is it the person who does the work with some review? What is the way to make it?
I don't know, we just need to be characterized more...
Well, for instance, when we have a discussion at the city council, I obviously, and I've said before, even though you guys don't have to direct me, I vote in a way, morally, I would, I vote in the way, yes or no, in the way the council, the majority of the council wants. However, like the one on whether Rancho Mirage and Indian Wells should stay on or not, that was sort of something that just sort of came up, and...
But it came from, it came from a committee.
No, it didn't come up.
Well, we had not discussed it.
We hadn't discussed it, so how do we, yeah, I think the question is, do we have to discuss all these first, or is it default, the person who's done the work on it?
Well, that was actually tabled.
Yeah, it was, no, but it raises, actually, we need to put it on the agenda so city council can weigh in.
In fact, I was one of the people who supported tabling it, because I didn't know.
No, no, it's not that issue, it's, you're using one particular issue, it's just an example.
Well, can you use an issue where I voted on something that was not the way the majority of the council wanted?
Well, the question, I think the, there are two questions for me. One is, you're not always going to know, and the council may not always know, the position the policy person who's worked on it has taken. So how do we get a position of council on those, so we don't have someone who's worked on it for a year? And then you might vote differently, because it's your position, and you don't know their position, I mean, how do we do that?
Well, how about this? What if whoever created the policy creates what is actually read by whoever's going to be reading it? So as an example, if you're writing the policy for something, and Rob, as our chair for it, goes to read it, you should hand it to him, and it should be verbatim.
That's one person. I think, unless we're just discussing.
Yeah.
I mean, say that someone on the homeless committee, or energy environment, or transportation, they know, they're going to know, because they vote on something that is going to the executive committee, there's usually enough time for them to at least put it on the consent calendar for us to vote on it.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, is that the easiest way to do this, is whenever there's something going to executive committee or that agenda, the council...
We basically get...
We get the recommendation from the person who's on the policy committee.
Yeah, but I don't think it has to go on the council agenda, we're going to be putting all this stuff on the council agenda?
Well, it's, but it's consent.
Well, you put it on consent.
Oh, put it on consent, yeah.
We put it on consent.
And someone could pull it if they disagree.
If someone wants to talk about it, then they can.
Yeah.
Because, because I actually, you know, it would make me feel better, because that way, because sometimes, you know, I don't know, because we haven't discussed something, and I, and I can't...
Right, no, that's, this is an example.
This is actually a really good solution. That way, we can all see what's actually going regardless, which I think is really good.
But it's going to be up to the person on those, on those subcommittees to make sure they keep the council informed immediately.
I want to raise one legal issue.
It's their job, I'm sorry, Eddie, it's their, it'll be their job to get it to Dr. Reddy.
Well, let me offer that those will also go to the TAC commission, committee which I'm on, so then I will funnel them into the council agenda if they're, if they're emanating from, from a committee.
Because if we, if we get the agenda for the, you know, once we know something's going to executive committee, then we have enough, we should have enough time to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not every committee that has a, that has an item that goes to the executive committee. We, I mean, I think the homelessness committee had maybe three items the whole year that went to the executive committee.
Guys, we're beating it to death. It's the perfect solution. It goes to, goes to David for consent.
Now, the question I have, though, is, are any of the things that the executive committee votes on, public hearings, or they're just the items?
That was, that was going to be my only point, is public hearings are different.
I don't think they are.
Public hearings are a special animal, where the executive committee member, or the TAC member, if, I don't think TAC has public hearings. The executive committee member, though, would certainly need to listen to the public hearing.
I think it's a rare occasion. There was a public hearing on the, on the CB Link on the environmental.
Right.
So, that was...
It's not common.
Yeah, that, but it's, but other than that, I don't remember any recent public hearings, other than an EIR or something of that sort.
In those cases, we can't require, we could give input.
Advisory and input, which is fine, as long as it's stated that way.
That's all we have to do.
Yeah, and I don't need a vote. I mean, it could just be advisory.
Right, it's a discussion.
Okay, this is ready to serve?
Done, okay.
Ready, done.
Next.
Home, we get homelessness, public safety, transportation, Coachella Valley Conservation. If anybody's on it, doesn't want to be on their yell. Conservation Commission, Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy Board, Main Street Uptown Business Association. I go to that every time, and I think Jeff goes to a lot of them, too.
Yeah.
Palm Springs, I'm going to miss it this week, because they rescheduled it, by the way.
Oh, okay.
I've got a dermatology appointment.
Okay, I probably can go this week, and it's on the ballot measure anyway, so I'm on that subcommittee.
Okay.
Keep going.
Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce.
Yep, it's really nice in the morning after a council meeting, but I will keep doing it.
Greater Palm Springs Convention Visitors Bureau. Oh, yeah, that's, I go to that, yeah. We don't vote on anything that's controversial. Riverside County Community Commission. Actually, Dale Cook goes to those meetings. I don't go. It's, it's sort of traditional. Riverside County Community Benefit Committee.
Nobody's going.
Do we need somebody there?
Pointy butt, talk to the butt.
Oh.
Do you know anything about that?
No, but we don't have an appointment, so...
Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Yeah.
And Sunline.
That's, that's the guy who came in.
Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communications Authority. I go to, they cancel three out of four of those meetings that hardly ever meet. I'm actually the vice chairman.
We don't, we don't have that list either. The back of our, our, our lists are all blank.
That's fine, we can...
Well, I can read them. Eastern Riverside County Interoperability Communications, ERICA Board. That meets, that's reached about twice a year, and I'm actually the vice chairman. Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission, Councilmember Roberts.
Okay, hold that for a sec. So, Dr. Reddy, I have not yet attended one of those meetings on your advice. According to Ginny, they don't even have me as a Palm Springs representative. What do we do here?
We believe it's not necessary at this point, but we, let, let us check and confirm. I would leave that here at the moment.
I saw their letterhead was included in something we dealt with, and there was a letter from them in, in a packet that we had. And on the letterhead was Councilmember Betts from Desert Hot Springs and several other people, and, but, but Councilmember Coors was not listed.
No, she means, Councilmember Roberts, which means I was invisible, and I'll have to talk to my therapist about it.
Yes.
But what do we do in the meantime? Should we just hold it for now?
Let's hold it. I will get confirmation of the specific role and requirement.
Okay.
You're rarely invisible. I wouldn't worry about it too much. Friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, Councilmember Fote.
Bigger than life, Jay.
Yes.
Palm Springs, there's no alternate there, but I know Ginny always goes. Palm Springs Resorts.
Yep, that's me.
Southern California Associate Scag, General Assembly. I go to that, and I think that's, if anybody else wants to do it, let me know.
No.
We've got two more.
That's the most.
Projects. And then there's, the City Representative to Projects, Downtown Public Restrooms. Oh, yeah, okay.
Which page, number, oh, where are they?
We now have six places or something.
Now, yes. Enclave at Baristo Project, Councilmember Mills. Do we know what that is?
That's, that's done.
But we don't have the bathrooms, I think.
And what are you doing with the downtown bathrooms, Mayor?
Yeah, what are you doing?
Yes.
Well, I talked to Dr. Reddy about that. You know, they keep wanting us to put in some, some portable bathrooms and stuff, and we just thought, it was just not in the budget.
To put in a parking lot at night.
Well, they, they have not given us a location they would be acceptable to that.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to have it there.
No, we actually, we pay the Hyatt to have 24-hour bathrooms that are open at all times. So, we have public bathrooms, which Main Street was apprised to learn.
And we have the yogurt place, we have a bunch of them.
No, but we actually, we even have, they're one at night once. But the Hyatt is open 24 hours.
So, is, is the mayor going to be meeting the all-night bathroom?
It's because it's so cold up here.
I know.
They refuse to turn that thing on.
I'm probably only the other person, only person in Palm Springs with the cold and 117 degrees.
Are we getting rid of the bathrooms?
We can get rid of both of them.
No, they, they ask for it.
You want to keep it?
Yeah, I'll keep it.
Guys, let him have the bathrooms.
You can have the bathrooms.
I'll be the bathroom Bob. Office of Neighborhood Involvement, ONI. Ginny, Airport Commission, Councilmember Mills. Okay. Was that it?
So, we're done.
Done.
We're done.
Next.
Phew. JR, you were in a hurry.
No, I just want to get us through this.
Okay.
I would like to have a life someday.
Did you notice, counsel, that if you'd have done this last night at 11 o'clock, it would not have been quite as spirited, the conversation?
No.
Okay, next item, item two. Discussion of a Development Agreement with Palm Springs County Club LLC related to the development of the Serena Park Project. Staff report, please.
I move approval.
Mr. Mayor, we're, we're starting on...
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I am a conflict with this item. I own property adjacent to this project. So, I'll be leaving, recently.
So, you're going to the audience, or you...
Ginny, did you buy it today?
No.
We're starting our special meeting now, so we have public comment.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, that is on there, too. JR's pushing me so fast. Okay, public comments. Pursuant to the Brown Act, public comment is limited to item number two that appears on the adjourned regular meeting agenda. Two minutes assigned for each speaker.
Bye-bye.
Ms. Hart, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
No speaker cards were turned in.
Anyone wish to turn in a speaker card on this? Going, going, gone. Okay, public comments are over. Item two, discussion of a development agreement with Palm Springs County Club LLC related to the development of the Serena Park Project. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I will quickly go through the staff report. And as you know, this is relating to the Serena Park project that was approved last year. On page two of the staff report, I identified the resolutions and ordinances that were approved by this council. There were a number of, of major discretionary entitlements approved that basically convert the prior Palm Springs Country Club Golf Course, which was open space, to very low-density residential land uses, as shown on page three. The general plan update from 2007 actually anticipated that conversion, and a land-use policy was established that allowed for converting open space to residential, provided that, that open space was replaced either in kind or through an INLU density transfer fee, or through density transfer. As part of the discretionary approvals that this council granted to the Serena Park project, that developer chose to comply with that land-use policy by agreeing to a INLU fee, which at that time, we suggested would be as much as $3 million, which would represent approximately half of the cost of the open space we are attempting to acquire elsewhere. And given that INLU density transfer fee that's required, a development agreement was the tool and the mechanism to have that transfer occur. I won't go into all the background on a development agreement, but I'm happy to answer any questions that, that's on pages four and five, and six and seven. On seven, however, this is where we really need to focus your attention. So, we did have a draft development agreement prepared at the time the discretionary approvals were being considered by the Planning Commission and council in 2016. And, and for the sake of your reference, a, the draft development agreement is actually in your packet on page 151. It was presented to the Planning Commission, which is required by our municipal code. And the Planning Commission did review this on April 27th, and recommended unanimously to recommend a council approval of the development agreement, noting the items on page seven and eight. I'm happy to go through those, but the main points that the Planning Commission recommended you approve was a 20-year term. So, the, the development agreement would vest the tentative map and all the discretionary approvals for the length of the development agreement for 20 years. As a reminder, this is a multi-phase, I believe, four-phase project of up to 386 units, so it will take some time. The developer anticipates 10 years, but that could lengthen dependent upon the economy.
I'm sorry, Marcus, before you move on, what was the recommendation of the Planning Commission on that? To, to give them the 20 years?
Correct.
So, before we do that, is there not another mechanism? My concern is foot dragging. If, if we really believe this is a 10-year project, then there's no reason it, it shouldn't be a 10-year project. Why don't we bring it back for a decision in 10 years? I, I, I'm worried about giving them 20 years.
One, one of the requirements in the municipal code with development agreements, which is part of what's recommended, is annual review. And so, every year, there's an annual review on the status of the project and the schedule, and if there, you know, how the economy's doing. And so, there's a mechanism for you to track their progress, and whether, you know, and whether or not the, you know, so...
I understand that. The problem is, if they're slowing down, we're not going to shorten the period then. My concern is to keep their feet to the fire, have a shorter agreement. I, I, anyway, I'm just...
Well, that's certainly, that was one of the points that we needed direction from you. And I do want to point out that the developer is here, so if there are questions of the developer, I'd recommend you invite those questions of them.
Yeah, if you look on page 146, JR, look at page 146. It says, while the staff and the applicant have worked to agree on most terms, following issues have not been resolved. And number one was length of agreement. Staff believes the term of 20 years is longer than necessary to address project build-out. The developer initially requested 25 years, and staff recommends 10 years. So, obviously, this has been, this was a matter that was discussed at planning.
I knew I read this somewhere. Funny when we read it.
There's, yeah, page 146.
So, Marcus, says staff recommends that. Does that mean you?
The staff collectively, but ultimately, the Planning Commission has noted in the minutes, which are also included on page 183, the Planning Commission considered and was persuaded by the developer for the reasons that they stated of the need for a 20-year term. On the, on the basis of those reasons that I cited, that, that really, on a project of this magnitude, the economy's really going to dictate the, the, the rate that they deliver those units.
So, staff is now recommending 20 instead of 10?
Well...
Or because of the Planning Commission?
We're reporting what Planning Commission's recommending, but the point of this is to receive direction from you, so we can do the final terms of the development.
But generally, it would always give you the maximum flexibility, so a 10-year review and possible extension obviously gives you that more than just a full-up flat 20-year.
Can you, is, does the escalation have anything to do with that 20-year term?
It, it, it does. So, the, the second part of this, that the developer was requesting, was to freeze building permit fees, only those that are discretionary for the city's general fund, not paid to third parties or enterprise funds, and freeze those at the current rate for five years, and having those adjusted automatically to the then-current fees in the fifth, and the 10th, and the 15th year. So, that, that mechanism is common in some development agreements. And I, I did some assumptions on what that impact would be to the city, based on their expectation to deliver 80 units in the first phase over five years. And it would be about a $50,000 impact to the city. But again, that's based on a wild assumption on how fast they're going to be delivering units over that term.
And our, our fees adjust every year based on what it costs us to provide, right?
Yes, they're adjusted by what we call a CPI, which is based, yes.
Okay.
So, those would automatically adjust and take into account all of those annual increases at the fifth year.
Right. But for the first, for years two, three, and four, they wouldn't?
Right.
Okay.
The, the, the other main point to, to really identify is the INLU fee. And so, the Planning Commission recommended that the council, rather than, the Planning Commission did not recommend an amount, and deferred that to you. And what we've recommended is that, based on what we think that the open space that we're trying to acquire will cost, that that $3 million amount is appropriate. But that is one of the points we need your direction on tonight.
Did we not discuss and make a decision on this previously? Is that my imagination?
On what?
On the...
On the INLU.
I believe we may have discussed this in closed session.
No, I thought it was open, but, okay.
So, so you based, the, the $3 million figure was based on value, your, today's value of the, of the open space, or what was it based on?
Let me refer you to page four. So, so the mechanism for trying to arrange for the ultimate density transfer, using the INLU fee provided by Palm Springs Country Club, is an exchange of properties. So, ultimately, the property in question to acquire for use of open space is the parcels on the Chino Cone. But the mechanism for that is the acquisition of...
Is this really comparable to Chino Cone property?
Another property. The, the value that's necessary is ultimately the value of the property that we need to acquire for the benefit of acquiring the Chino Cone parcel.
I see what you're saying, the trade. I got it.
So, the, the, at the end of the day, the parcel that the city has to buy, we think is going to be $6 million. And we're, and, and the, and the suggestion is that half of that acquisition cost would come from this development agreement.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Marcus.
I just want to interject a legal concept regarding development agreements. There's a lot of things that happen in a development agreement, as you all know. And it's perfectly within the realm of the council's discretion to have a development incentive premium paid by the developer for the privileges, the many privileges that are extended, whether that's fees fixed at a certain rate with a limited escalator, whatever it is that we decide to do for the developer. So, please don't feel constrained to the real estate transaction with respect to the amount of money that comes in from the developer. That has been a discussion up to now, but I don't want the council to feel legally bound to that concept.
Now, Mr. Fuller, on page 156, it says, in paragraph E1 and 2, it says, payment of the developer agreement fee is a lump sum of $2.5 million to be paid through statewide community infrastructure program funds, blah, 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 blah. So, when, when would that be paid? That's payable upon signing this agreement, or what is it?
We actually need that payment upfront, and so, what we're suggesting as, a suggestion to the council is to require the lump sum payment within three years of execution of the development agreement. It turns out that the skip program isn't the appropriate mechanism for financing the, that type of INLU fee. And in discussions with the developer, they don't intend to finance it, period. They'll find a, a way to secure it and pay it within three years of, of execution of the development agreement. That's the suggestion tonight.
But that's in the development agreement we're voting on, right?
That would be, if you give us direction, the terms in the development agreement that we would bring back on the 19th.
And then, payment of a development agreement fee of $6,000 per new house payable, prior to issuance of building permits, and there's 80 houses, right? So, that comes out to $480,000.
There's, there's 386 units, so...
Units, it just says houses.
Right.
And they're not, some of them are not houses, they're multifamily units, so is that...
We're counting them all as units. And so, when Planning Commission reviewed this, what they...
So, it'd be $6,000 for a unit of condominiums, or $6,000 for a house?
Right, they're atta, yeah, attached or detached.
Okay, but is it okay to say house? Because some of them aren't houses, they're...
Well, I, I actually don't think there's any condominium units in the project. They're either attached or detached on individual ones.
Well, I mean, okay, all right. But it's not $6,000 for each of the 300 and something units, is it?
I, I believe it is.
Okay.
Let me do the math. But ultimately, Planning Commission recommended that, and let me cite it in the minutes.
Because 360 times 6 is a lot.
So, what Planning Commission recommends, what Planning Commission recommends to you is that you should determine the amount, and the payment of fees should be set by the council on a date certain, early in the process, in lump sum, not on a unit, per-unit basis. So, so based on that recommendation, and in talking with the developer, we're suggesting a lump sum fee paid at least, within three years of execution of development agreement with a security instrument to ensure that they satisfy that obligation after the development agreement's executed.
So, what's that number, and what's the security instrument?
$3 million.
So, it is the three?
Yes.
Just the straight three?
That's what we're suggesting. And, and there'd be some, some lien or deed of trust, or some instrument that would secure that obligation.
So, Eddie, typically, when you were talking about the fee structure outside of this, are there typical standards for us to consider on that?
Well, I, I've, I've done a few of these, and as a practical matter, there's no one right or wrong way. There can be a lump sum, it can be related to a particular transaction or event, like you've heard Mr. Fuller describe. There's also per-unit incentives, similar to what the mayor was discussing. There's also a combination of the two. In this instance, as staff has explained to you, and I, I think Mr. Fuller can go further if you need him to, we really can't accomplish the three-way transaction that's desired and contemplated by staff without receipt of those funds within the first three years. That's an important point. The security instrument would have a takedown schedule associated with it that I've discussed with council for the developer, that's consistent with that three-year period.
And also, if we could define the three-year, because if we're going to do this transaction, it may require it before the three years. So, I don't know if you want to lessen that window, or if that's possible, if the developer can do that.
And, and the developer, obviously, is here, and probably has quite a bit to say, if you'll allow them.
Okay, to be more, to be more succinct, 360 times 6,000 is another $2,160,000. So, is that what we're suggesting?
Let me, let's ask the developer, but that's not what was recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'm just going by what's in the agreement.
The, what we're suggesting to you is $3 million.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just confused. I was just reading this agreement, and I thought that's what we were...
Well, it's just, it's a completely different criteria that we're using. Well, it's a completely different criteria that we're using. You're saying, Marcus, it was based on the acquisition trade number, correct?
That was the whole intent of the original concept for this development agreement, was whatever the cost is of the exchange property that ultimately gets us the Chino Cone parcels, this developer would be responsible for half of that cost. At one point in time, that cost of that property was estimated a little bit lower, which is why you saw the $2.5 million. But as we went through this process with the Serena Park and the other negotiations with the other party on the exchange parcel, we wanted to ensure the city was left whole, and that price has gone up to $3 million for the estimated $6 million cost of the exchange property, if that makes sense.
It does. So Rob, I like your math better.
No, no, I'm just trying to be, you know, if we're voting, I try to read the stuff we're going to vote on, and this development agreement we're voting on starts on one page 51, 150, I believe. So I just read it, and it said that, that's why I had a question on that, it didn't make sense to me. Because he's saying $3 million, this says $2.5 million plus another 2.2 million or approximately.
He's using a different criteria than what you're reading.
So if we're going, we need to change this agreement, if that's what we're going to do.
So...
The agreement would be changed.
Yeah, and this was just, this was a draft agreement that the Planning Commission saw. This is not the agreement that's before you today. That's why we wanted to have this discussion.
Oh.
To get your input.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then we'll come back with the actual formal agreement when we would have the public hearing for first reading.
So can I ask where the criteria came from that was in the draft agreement?
I believe they estimated a per-unit cost. So the 380, well, and they had more units. Remember, when the project ultimately got approved, the council required a net reduction of units. So I think there were 400 and plus units at one point. So that $6,000 figure was whatever the total units were in the original proposal would net the $2.5 million. So I wouldn't focus on the numbers, but the idea there at that time was they were going to be responsible for $2.5 million either lump sum or on a per-unit basis. Planning Commission recommends to you, you set the fee, and it's a lump sum early in the process.
Okay, I understand.
Got it.
The only, there's a number of other items listed in the development agreement which are really already required in the conditions of approval for the project relating to the walls around the adjacent condominium developments. The one big issue that was also to be included in the development agreement was the public park. So on page nine, you see the original concept for the public park, and as a reminder, this is a privately owned and maintained publicly accessible park that was a requirement of the council and its approval. At the time that the project was approved, there wasn't any details on that park, and that was to follow at this time with the development agreement. This concept was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission had reviewed it and provided some comments, which are noted on page 10. The developer has addressed all of those comments, and there is a revised concept plan. Ultimately, however, what we're suggesting to you is the final details of that public park, consistent with what we will bring to you with the development agreement on the 19th, will be part of the final development plans that are required, because as you know, this project has a preliminary, is a PDD. And when they bring forward the final improvement plans for the PDD, this public park will be part of it, and that final PD is approved by the Planning Commission. We would include language in the development agreement that the final improvements required in the public park would be consistent with those that are outlined in the development agreement, and as shown in the final plans for the PD approved by the Planning Commission. And as you can see, the park includes a dog park, a play area, tennis courts, and...
Pickleball.
Yes. That was one of the suggestions of Planning Commission. So a number of amenities that are lacking in that part of the city, recreational amenities.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions of staff?
I just want to, I want to just note that I paid very careful attention to the document itself in response to your comments, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely right, it's in there exactly as you say, on page six of the draft development agreement, no question about it, which is page 156, I think, as you've said, of the packet. So these are items where we would like direction from the council. I'm sure the developer will have something to say about it.
Anyone have questions of the developer? Should we ask him to come up and explain?
I don't have specific questions, but do we want to give him a minute just to talk to us? I mean, I don't want to walk through the whole project again, but...
No.
What do you think?
Is there any need to, council?
Absolutely.
Absolutely? Okay.
Okay, you want to limit it, or just...
No.
Okay.
Developer, can you keep it at a reasonable length?
Hi, yes. Council members, I am Mark Allen. I'm the lawyer for the developer, and also served my responsibility to do the development agreement and to talk to you about the finances.
Could you talk more into the microphone, please?
Sure, is that better?
Thank you.
Yeah. So a couple of things that you brought up, I wanted to explain. As was already explained to you, the draft that you have in front of you is a prior draft, is not the draft that we have been discussing. And as you noted, that draft does have a $6,000 per unit payment. The concept is, and that's being discussed, is a lump sum payment, so that things don't match. We certainly can't pay both. Right now, the load for $3 million is around $7,800 per unit, but since we have to pay it all upfront, it's a much bigger cash flow burden for us, so we have to see whether we can do that. The 20 years really has nothing to do with how fast we build it out, it really has to do with our financing requirements. In order for us to get financing, even if we have a 10-year build-out, we have to show that we will have the entitlements for at least 20 years. That's basically what the lenders are looking for. They aren't looking for us to cough across the line at 10 months, or 10, you know, nine years, 11 months, and 30 days. What they want to show is that we have some flexibility to go further on, and in terms of us dragging our feet, developers really do not have an incentive to not sell houses. Every economic force pushes the developer towards selling the houses as quickly as they possibly can. So the only reason that developers don't sell houses as fast as they possibly can is because they can't. It's never because they don't want to, or they have some incentive not to. Now, there is an annual review, I've gone through this, I represent other developers, gone through this on many occasions. I have never had an occasion where there has ever been a question about whether the developer could go faster, and for some reason wasn't. Usually, what the annual review has to do with is whether there's infrastructure things that we're required to do, and we'd like to move some infrastructure things ahead, those types of management things, but I've never had a situation where any developer has ever been trying not to sell houses as quick as they can. There's also a, there was also a question raised about, about how it's going to be financed, and frankly, we haven't worked that out. That's one of the provisions in the development agreement, is that we would have to come up with a financing arrangement that works. And as I said, that's going to be the most challenging part of this, because the time when you don't have cash flow is during the first three years. So it's a challenge for us in order to get that, get that in place. I've talked to Mr. Kotkin about some concepts that we think would work for both us and you, and we're in the process of working through those. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
I just want, at what point does the dog park, the tennis courts, whatever, when do they get built?
They get built upfront, Eric? Yeah, so those will be done in the first phase. So just, and we have an incentive to do that, too, because basically, as I understand, we're building from that end, right? Yeah, so from a marketing point of view, that end of the project is going to get done first, and we're basically going to be going from that end of the project to the other one in terms of the phasing.
Great, okay, thank you.
Other questions?
It actually looks like they've started working on some of the landscaping, because I've seen some new trees and things going in, correct? I thought I'd seen some new stuff go in. Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Are there any specifics at this point in the development agreement that you have issues with?
Well, no, we've submitted a draft to the city, and so we don't have any issues with the draft that we submitted. We haven't heard comments back, but I believe, based on my conversations with Mr. Holland, that it should be acceptable to the city the way it's drafted. But I think what the staff and attorneys are waiting for is to get direction from you, rather than going off on their own.
And that draft, we don't have yet, correct?
Well, the idea was, we didn't want the agreement attached, because we weren't asking you to approve it, we were asking you for some direction, and then we would create an agreement to bring back to you. And the issues that needed to be determined were the amount of money and the length...
So that's all you need from us?
Yeah, generally, those are the things that we need.
Got it.
Okay.
I think that's it.
I have questions for staff.
Anything else for me?
Not for me.
Not right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Eddie, I'm going to direct this to you. So I understand the developer's desire to have the development agreement, and more importantly, the entitlements go out as long as possible. And I understand that that's probably helpful for their financing, and I'm not concerned that they don't want to sell houses. What I'm concerned about is them not building them.
I get it.
And there are too many examples in Palm Springs of when we had an economic shift, we had cleared areas, essentially, we just had dust bowls next to partially-built condominium complexes. That's my concern with this. And holding their feet to the fire to finish complexes, or at least to get sites put back together, I can't be alone up here in the concern on that.
Let me address that very directly, and I hope succinctly. The developer understands and has already expressed, I think somewhat succinctly themselves, they want to do this quickly as well. These agreements often have performance schedules associated with them.
That's what I haven't seen.
And you haven't seen that, the document in here doesn't have that. I've already noted for myself, at least for you, Councilmember Roberts, you're recommending a performance schedule with respect to the phasing. And by the way, the developers got all this worked out in their own pro forma and with respect to their own plan for construction, development, marketing. It shouldn't be difficult for us to give you that short leash that you're looking for, and give you that annual review process, which, by the way, is statutory. Even if we didn't want to, we're supposed to come back every year for a checkup.
Well, so that's my concern. So it's difficult for me, looking at the development agreement with a time on it, to not have what you're describing, to not have the performance schedule. So, you know, it's this 20-year thing that I'm struggling with, and the dollar amount, because I don't, the dollar amount thing, you know, that is being recommended by the Planning Commission, I guess, got worked out at the Planning Commission. I just wonder if, you know, frankly, if we're leaving money on the table, or how we should be looking at this.
Well, the developer is here, I don't know to what extent they're prepared to discuss phasing and to discuss the concept of a performance schedule, but that's certainly within the purview of what you may want to ask them this evening.
Well, I don't need that from them, but obviously, the city's going to want one and demand one, right? So I guess when it comes back, it would be helpful to have some sort of performance schedule that makes sense for the 20 years, or adjusts the timing. 20 years just seems like a long entitlement for this, and, you know, these entitlements have values. I get why developers want them, and want them for as long as possible. And we've seen properties rise and fall in value, or sell or not sell when developers get in trouble or lose their financing, but man, they sure, they have that entitlement locked in. And so that's where I sort of look for balance, and I don't have anything to grasp.
And I will tell you that one of the stickier little pieces of negotiation regarding these agreements, as they're often finalized, is what is a force majeure event? What is going to toll the time with respect to the performance schedule? So you're hitting, as my civil procedure professor used to say, you're hitting the nail with your head. You're right on, this is exactly what we try to accomplish in the agreement. We try to give you as much certainty in a completely uncertain world as we can. We want to be reasonable and fair to the developer, we want them to feel like they can build their project without so much dependence on the economy, and you've already heard Mr. Fuller explain that to you. I'm not going to belabor that point.
Well, I guess what I'm asking for is I'd like to see at least a draft of a performance agreement, as well as how the city would handle delays.
I know that Mr. Allen and I can address that, I'm looking directly at him, and I'm waiting for an affirmative nod, and he's giving it to me. So I'm confident we can deliver that to you.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at that from you to best address the concerns of the city.
And I suppose the guidance I would ask, and the developer's here, so if we have a problem, it would be best to identify it now, what's your outside date for targeting the completion of that first phase that involves the dog park and the other community amenities?
You know, frankly, well, obviously, before anything else opens. I mean, I think that that would be more based on allowing them to sell or get CFO on anything else. But I, you know, I frankly would trust Marcus to give us that performance schedule and some ways, you know, and some motivation in it if things start going astray. That's my concern.
And we can even structure it with incentives, if you wish. I mean, there's a lot of ways to do this.
Bonus-penalty, I think, is a very fair way to go. I think that's fair for everybody.
There you go.
So is that something that you guys want to bring back to us?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff?
So, council, what's your direction on the amount?
Well...
The dollar amount?
From what you were saying, you were concerned that three years was too long to get the lump sum payment. So what are you recommending, doctor?
Well, in my sense, it would have to be at least within the first 12 months. But again, I don't know what the developer, and that's partly why I wanted to have this discussion. Is that possible? Is it not possible? Mr. Taylor? Could you come to the microphone, please?
I was having a discussion with my council. The question came up.
So the question is, obviously, on the amount, if it would be able to be paid to the city within the first 12 months?
No, that's very simple. The answer is no. My part in this role, besides the design and the technical part, is dealing with the banks and making this a financially viable project. And I can't tell you enough, we've done handstands through the last five years, trying to come up with a project that's phased, that makes sense financially. To add clauses, to put those kinds of language that you're talking about into this agreement is absolutely fatal. We are back to a dust bowl. I can't say it any clearer. I think that with the kind of discussions that we've had with your council, and my council's experience in structuring projects like this, it's very worthwhile to have a discussion and see what we can do, but I don't want to sugarcoat it for you.
So what would be...
Adding a poison pill is a poison pill, and we're right there, right now.
So, Mr. Taylor, what would be a reasonable timeframe that you could do?
There is not a reasonable timeframe. I'm being really blunt with you. In order to get this thing financed through a bank, as soon as I walk in and say, "Okay, we've got to do this by this date, and this by this date," in the Coachella Valley in California today, the bank will say, "No, I won't even get to the mid-level of the bank. I'll get killed at the very lowest level." It's not possible.
So then, what clause, what would be recommending?
It's really the structure of the project itself. It's what we've already done with the phasing. It's saying, "We're working from one end to the other in a logical manner," which is what we've done, all the work that we've done with the staff, and from an engineering standpoint, and the conditions that we worked out with the Planning Commission. And the incentive becomes, quite frankly, the market. It becomes, "Does this project work?" And that's the feedback that I get from the development community in order to sell houses. And there are a lot of projects in the Coachella Valley right now that are dead, or they're standing dead, and people don't know it yet. But what we've done is structure a project that makes sense financially, so that it's successful. But to put in a poison pill, "You've got to do this by this date," we're done. We're not, we're, you know, we'll walk out of here, and we're done tonight.
The question was, "Timing of paying the lump sum?"
The ti, okay, as far as...
That was the question, but we should talk about this one, too.
Paying the lump sum is, that's what we did, talked about with staff, was three years is really about as tight as we can do it. I mean, from the time that we actually get engineering plans done until I can have really fruitful discussions with a bank is at least a year. And that does not include paying the sum. Running the numbers, just, you know, to kind of put it out there, so you have an idea, we have to get into Phase 3 before we have positive cash flow without the development agreement. There is no equity. Again, we're trying to clean up the mess as best we can, but I got to be blunt with you on what's going on there, cash flow-wise. This is not a goose that lays golden eggs. It isn't. I mean, we've structured it, so...
Okay, but, you know, at the bottom of page three, it's in the last paragraph, says, "The developer elected to comply with LU 2.2 by offering to make a payment in lieu fees for the city to allow the city to acquire open space elsewhere in the exchange for the density transfer and land use designation change associated with the property." So I think it's reasonable for us to ask, "When will you be paying what you've agreed to pay?"
Correct, three years works, that's what we talked about with staff. But a year does not, or two years does not.
And then on the number of years, the 20 years, could you live with that? And then on the number of years, the 20 years, could you live with that with the, we're going to bring back performance schedule? So those were the two main issues that we needed some direction on.
With the performance schedule, yes.
Yeah. Marcus, was there any other final, because skip is now off the table, correct? Is there any other issues that we need a direction on?
The other one is the building fees. So, the proposal is to fix those fees in five-year increments with an automatic adjustment in the fifth year, every fifth year.
You said that's only going to be, so we're amortizing them?
Back of the envelope was 40,000 or 50,000, right? Total?
Yeah, as best as I could estimate it.
That's 50, 40, 50 every five years, or 40 or 50 over the 20 years?
Over, so I looked at it in a five-year increment. So, assuming a 5% increase every year, and assuming that they delivered 16 units a year for the 80 units in the first phase in five years, it was about a $40,000 total cost. So, it's not a lot of money.
With that, I do have concerns about the length of time with no triggers, you know, that the...
On the 3 million?
Yeah, that the city has no recourse.
On the 3 million?
No, not on the 3 million.
Oh.
On the 20-year time.
On the 3 million, I don't know what to say. Does the city feel comfortable, or are we at risk waiting that long?
I think we have direction. We'll go back in final negotiations with the developer to see if we can get an agreement for a document to bring back to you to consider in full.
Okay. And then, again, I don't know how long three years plays into the other side of that deal of the acquisition we're trying to make.
And if it says three years, and then at two and a half years, the developer comes back and says, "Well, I really need five." I mean, how, should there be some sort of rules in there on an extension of time on that?
The, what we will bring to you will have a security instrument, so he won't have a choice. So, the city can call the security instrument.
Okay, so, and Marcus, with respect to the other side of this deal, where does the three years play in? Is there a timing issue on that?
That is a guess. So, there's a lot of moving pieces, as you know, to that multi-party acquisition, so...
But I'm just worried that if the players on that side want to come to the table, but we don't have the money...
Well, that could manifest then in a couple ways. Either that that price is different, and we can handle it with the dollars we have, or could it require a bridge loan from another fund such as the General Fund, et cetera, et cetera. Now, those may be things you're not even interested in, but there, it creates challenges. So that's why we're going to go back and continue negotiations with the developer to see if we can get an agreement to present to you that would be acceptable.
All right. I mean, I sense that you guys get the things that we have interest in. I mean, I don't know if we've expressed them all, but do you feel comfortable to go back and craft something that makes us feel confident that this project will go forward, won't be dropped or sold partway through or left us holding the bag? And then furthermore, are we requiring bonding and things like that on this, around this project?
Yes, it's a tentative map, so when they do their final map, there'll be security bonds in place for all the public improvements.
Do you want a subcommittee on this? Because Chris Mills wants to do it. I'm kidding, but do you want a subcommittee? Do you want help or not?
A subcommittee would be helpful in this case.
I'm willing to do it, or if somebody else will.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. I've been following this project for a long time with Mr. Taylor, and that's fine.
Yep, that's fine. Shall we appoint the subcommittee?
We, I can do that, so we'll just appoint the subcommittee of, the ad hoc, I'm sorry, the ad hoc committee of Councilmembers Mills and Roberts on this.
And that'll expire in 21 years.
Twenty-one days or less.
Do we want to put a sunset date on this, say...
Let's just leave it ad hoc right now. Do we need it, do we need it?
Well, at least to the end of the year.
Well, I don't want to say the end of the year, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You want to make it one year, just to be safe?
No.
End of the year, okay.
You can renew it, and it'll be...
Okay.
If we need to. I'm sure the developer, as well as the council, wants it to be done along before that.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Mills?
Marcus, so, so this, the, there still would be, even after the determination of the DA, there's still the, the final PDD comes back?
Yes.
Along with the map?
Correct. But I don't believe the council required the final PD to come back to council.
Now, the only, the only thing I'm reading out of the staff report...
Final PD will come to council.
It comes to council?
No.
No, no?
Yes.
Doesn't normally.
Why would it not?
The final PD doesn't. Usually, it just goes to Planning Commission, unless, unless we ask for it.
You've got the most experience on the Planning Commission. What do you think?
I don't.
We can call it up. I mean, this is a big project.
Yeah, it's a big, I think, I think a cursory final, the development agreement will come here.
Why don't you send it, why don't you send it, we can send it on consent and read it and look at it and pull it if we want to comment on it.
That way, at least, we've got responsibility for it.
I think it's a good idea.
I don't, I think you don't know what you're getting yourself into, so the...
Oh, what, you won't be here?
No, I mean, what, the, that the amount of drawings, et cetera, required for final PD and the detail is something that probably doesn't need to be at the level we look at. The Planning Commission really...
Well, no, we should see it after Planning Commission, just for final approval. It should all be done by then. We're giving it a cursory once-over.
Mr. Mayor, let me interject.
We're adding a month on the process, is what we're doing.
In the conditions of approval, Planning Condition Number Five does require it to come to City Council after AAC and Planning Commission.
Okay.
So that was one of the conditions that you all added when we went through.
Okay.
When we approved the free...
Okay.
So, so, if I understand right, that the Planning Commission recommendations also say that the final design of the park, incorporating what I'm assuming were, was the list from the Planning Commission, that the final development plans will have the final drawings for that, for the park as well. Is that correct? Okay. And we're, and we're looking at potentially approving the DA on the 19th. Is that correct?
Well, that's if we can get a document to bring to you. I'm not certain that that's possible now, but that's why it might be important to have the subcommittee, if it's possible, to meet Monday, because this would have to be finalized before the agenda on Thursday.
I'm open to that. I just may have to do it telephonically.
Well, I mean, I can do it Monday, but I can't do it till probably after four or five, so...
And would the developer be available?
Do we need the developer for that?
Well, it would have to be actual, we would need them there, because this would be the part of the negotiation, yeah.
Okay, well, will you have put together something for us first to start to take a look at?
Well, my sense is, is these, a couple of big issues. If we can't get past that, then I don't think there will be an agreement. So, I think those are the things we'd need to come to agreement on.
Okay, but I will want staff recommendations on that.
You know, I mean, we, we looked, I can't remember if it was this council or not, but, but we looked at the, an initial DDA when we approved this project earlier. I mean, we looked at a, strictly a draft. It was explained that way. There was a draft. So, I've seen it before. I, I can't remember if it was...
Well, we'll bring their draft. We have their draft.
Right.
So, so, we'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm certainly willing to do what it takes to get this on for the 19th and get this project moving, get the, get the DDA taken care of. So, whatever meetings that, that we need to have, from my standpoint, it sounds like Mr. Roberts agrees.
I will, I may not be present, but I'll be, I'll make myself available for phone conversations. This is an enormous project, and in as much as I understand, we want to move it forward, there's a lot of moving pieces.
Well, unless I'm wrong, the moving pieces that I've seen are the schedule that Mr. Roberts outlined, the, and the payment of the open space acquisition. Are those the only two that...
There was a third issue, wasn't there?
But you agreed on the, the...
The five-year...
Oh, on the term.
Basically, the fees.
And 20 years.
On the term, is that what we're talking about?
There was the terms, there was the amount of money.
The term with the fee escalator.
Yeah.
The five-year bumps?
Yeah, but we read that was a small amount of money that we'd go with.
Wasn't worth, it wasn't worth it, okay.
No, it's not worth.
So, it's really just, just those two items, okay. That, I mean, I think, I would think that's doable in two weeks, so...
Is the rest of the council happy with all these other elements?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, until we see a development agreement, it's hard to know what else is in it.
What, what's being negotiated right now is we're going to sit down and negotiate two elements, making the assumption that most everything else is okay.
Right, but we have to see everything else before we can comment on it.
And that's why we wanted to have this, just a plain discussion, because we were sort of in love.
So, we'll be, we'll bring a fresher, crisper draft to the council next time.
Well, let me, let me ask...
It won't be, it won't be a draft. It'll be a document that we'll be asking you to approve if the discussions with the developer go well.
Or amend.
And I, and I want to, wanted to ask the city attorney. So, we're, we're looking at a, essentially, a draft here in our packet right now.
I wouldn't even call it a draft. I think there's a draft that circulated between Mr. Allen and Mr. Holland, and that's not in your packet.
Okay, so, so have, so have, have you seen it?
I've seen this document.
No, no, have you seen what was handed in by Mr. Allen?
I have that, a version of that document up on my screen right now. I have not analyzed it thoroughly at all.
So, can you, can you comment as to how close it is to this, or maybe Mr. Allen could comment on that?
I think you should ask Mr. Allen if he's had the opportunity even to see what's in the agenda packet.
I mean, I'm just, what I'm trying to find out is, are we looking at a, at a 100% new document in two weeks, or is it just refining what we're, what's in our packet?
Does it really matter? I mean, we just need to see...
It does to me, it does to me, so...
Well, I mean, Chris, they, they're going to need to see everything regardless, so whether it's this document or...
But, but my point is, they can look at this that's in here, and if there's just minor changes, then just, they can, they can be highlighted, and so we don't have to spend...
They won't know, because we don't have the next level.
I mean, it's hard to carefully review a legal document without knowing what may be in or may not be in it. Now, I can do it relatively quickly if I get it in a reasonable amount of time.
Why don't we have Mr. Allen answer the questions?
Okay, this is, this is actually pretty simple. So, the draft you have in here is a draft that I prepared that we were ready to sign. It was based on the idea that my client would pay roughly $6,000 per unit on a per-unit basis, and it would add up to $2.5 million. That's what my client was, was willing to do and felt that they had promised to do. The proposal that, that has been circulating between myself and Mr. Holland changes about five sentences in this agreement. Changes are not minor, they are major changes, but they're only about five sentences.
Good.
Does that answer your question?
What I can also add to Mr. Allen's comments is that you've already got entitlements on this project. This is the business deal, and it's a very complex document, and Councilmember Corris is right, you have to know what you're looking at. And there are some details that I will want to look at with Mr. Allen, such as force majeure, particularly in the event that the performance schedule is an important element, which it is to this council. So, there's probably less drafting and more negotiating to do, which is why I think Dr. Reddy wanted you to do what you, I think, accomplished this evening.
Okay. So, we're done?
Okay.
Are we done?
I'm, I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Reddy, you have all the direction you need?
We do, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is City Council comments. I think we've had all those.
Actually, Mayor, we did have, the one other thing that was carried over from last night is the updated upcoming agenda in your yellow folder, if we could take a look at that.
So, I, I have some comments on that.
I would note that this has been revised, we added some items from last night's meeting. I would note, just draw your attention to the bottom of the page on September 20th. That is the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah, and my recommendation is that we post, move that meeting, cancel that meeting, and either move it, or depending upon what's on the agenda, we may just skip, skip the meeting.
When is, where's?
September 20th.
No, where's the paper, Will?
How does that affect the downtown park's schedule? Because we were kind of, trying to fast-track that, weren't we, with Mark Rios?
What, with regard to September 20th?
Yeah, or no, July, I'm looking at July.
July 20th.
July 20th.
Right, so that's, that's occurring. That's, we're on schedule there.
So, we're okay?
Yeah.
So, what were you, what were you, were you asking to change?
Oh, September 20th.
Oh, September, I was listening, I'm sorry.
We're getting rid of, yeah. I think we decided that, and the one of Christmas week, right, the 20th, whatever, that one in December, we got rid of.
Well, that's a good question. We didn't...
I thought we did.
I thought we did.
We did both of those at the prior meeting.
What was our direction?
We got rid of both.
Okay.
Whether we want to add another one in September, I guess we can decide on the 6th, based on how late it goes and how much is still left.
We decided to celebrate holidays.
Yeah.
But what do we do about Thanksgiving in November, too? That's, didn't, do we usually not do the Wednesday?
Well, no, that's a week before.
Oh, it's a week before, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's a week before.
Comments?
No.
Couple of things. So, one is for the 19th, we probably need a discussion item on ballot measures, just in case. We need more feedback, so city attorney could have a final draft of whatever's being brought back on the 26th, not just a report. We may need, and if we don't need it, we don't need it, but we may need discussion on that.
So, you're saying we'll have a draft for that meeting?
Well, we may have a draft, or we may have final ideas that we need input on, so a final one can be done for the 26th.
I'm trying to get a draft for you as early as Tuesday, so I'm pushing in that direction.
So, if we had a draft on the 19th to talk about, that would be cool.
Yeah, and I'm trying to give you some options as well.
Right, a couple drafts, right. So, I would add that. We probably need something on the budget, and one item, Dr. Reddy, is, does a healthcare district is finalizing what we need to do to get the match money. So, we want to, that is probably a budget item, right? You know, what we need to show to get the match, so...
So, we'll have a budget placeholder.
So, have a budget placeholder, probably in both. We won't need both, but have it in both, I would think.
In both?
The 19th and the 26th. We should have a budget placeholder.
Okay.
And the budget subcommittee will meet before then, right?
Can I also suggest that we take the, the leaf flowers out of the, the July 29th and move it, move it down to the September? Because I don't think we have all the information we need from AQMD, and we wanted to wait on that a little while.
Yeah, it's July 29th. I think we discussed last night that that...
Yeah, my concern with that is, at least in the past, AQMD has done their grant program in July and August. And so, why don't we find that out? Have you found that out since?
I have. So, they've announced their exchange program, and the one date that's available in the Coachella Valley is at the steel dealership here in Palm Springs on August 11th.
So, we, we need to act by then. We could do it at the last meeting if that gives us more time.
That's probably going to be a spirited discussion. We're going to need some time for that. Where, when do you guys want to do it?
Well, it, as you can see, the 26th is, is going to be a rather large one. It may be better to go ahead and do it on the 19th as opposed to the 26th.
Okay, so you'll be ready for that?
Yes.
A maybe, a big maybe?
If not, we'll, we will move it, but we're planning on it the 19th.
Leaf flowers.
Yes. And, and I would just note that part of, one of the reasons we can do it on the 19th is if you look to the urgency sign ordinance extension. As you see, the actual new ordinance is not on there. So, what we were going to do is just extend the current urgency ordinance, which should be...
Two years of urgency.
Quicker, and then, and then obviously have the, the full ordinance in the fall. So, that would obviously limit the discussion on that item.
Which will make it the urgency, urgency ordinance.
And then, since it's not anywhere here and it was previously scheduled, the solar ordinance is moving till September? Is that the plan?
At minimum, yes.
Okay. And then, so, a question just came up earlier, which is signs. And we talked about the signs at Tuckers Plaza, sort of the 12-by-40-foot sign, whatever it was, but the sign. That goes to planning, right? Is that correct? Is that gone to planning already? What is the status of that?
That's already approved, right?
Approved, done?
I'm sorry, a 40-foot sign?
No, he's kidding.
No, 12, 12-foot sign, that HSPV, went to HSPV, is what I understood.
And got approved.
For a 12-foot sign? For a 12-foot sign?
Recommended for approval, but it goes on to Planning Commission.
And when, do you know?
I believe that goes on our agenda on the 26th.
And then you'll notify us, if we want to call it up, we can, but it's final if we don't.
You'll, you'll get the same email notice as we...
Okay, and those are very helpful, so thank you for that.
Director Vak, may I ask that, can you, can you send us a drawing of that?
Yes.
When you have it, if, well, you already have it.
Can you do a model? No, sorry, kidding, okay.
Mr. Cochrane and I have been talking about the, a couple of items we want to put on the agenda regarding animal, animal ordinances, and so, when do we want to do that? Do we want to do that?
How's your bandwidth, Doctor?
I would say the fall.
September, October?
For sure. There's a simple cleanup of one of our ordinances to address backyard breeding that we definitely want to bring forward, and Mayor Pro Tempho and I'll see if we want to complement that with a couple of other cleanups.
So, that, I mean, we put that for October?
I would say either, either October or whatever second meeting you end up setting in September.
So, just a suggestion, Dr. Reddy, if it makes sense, if it looks like, if we all hold the second Wednesday in September, the 13th, and if the agenda on the 6th, because we'll have like a seven-week break or six-week break, starts getting really enormous, we can just continue it, or we can hold the one after on the 27th, whichever.
Yeah, because I won't, I will not be back in the country until right before this, our planned second meeting in September.
So, maybe we can do it on the third Wednesday, but just hold, whatever it is, let's figure out, holding a date so that...
The third?
As that agenda grows, we're not...
Or, or it may be better to just not have the meeting on the 6th, move that to the 13th, and then you'll have your, well, we'll work out, we'll, we'll, we'll look at our options.
And, and councilman, or Mayor Pro Tempho, I'm good to bring the animal issues even while, you know, I understand those fully. While I'm gone, I'm fine.
Oh, no, I want to hear you, I want to hear your brilliant thoughts on the item.
Oh, well, I'll call you, but, no, nevertheless, my point is, my point is I don't feel the need to be here unless you want me here for that, but you know my position on that.
I think we'll have so much else on the 6th, don't...
Yeah, I think, I think we can wait till the second meeting in September.
Just to throw, throw it out, since Councilmember Roberts won't be here on the 6th, what if we did the 13th and the 27th that month?
Yeah, that's...
That's fine, but I won't be here for the 13th either.
Oh, okay.
We have the 15th in the calendar for strategic planning, have we canceled that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have, haven't we?
Pardon me?
September 15th, we have as a strategic planning desk.
Yes, well, that's going to be moved until the new year.
Okay, oh, good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A question, uh...
Sorry, I was looking at my calendar.
Uh, city manager, so, so David, I mentioned several months ago about the bike bar, that we were supposed to draft that order, that agreement with those people.
The social cycle, correct?
Yes, they've been very patient, so...
Yeah, and I think that sort of got somewhere lost in the attorney transition, and I'm just asking Eddie Coldus, have you had any discussions on the, the social cycle with, with Mr. Holland, or is that...
I have not spoken with Doug about that item yet.
So, we will resurrect that, but my sense is, is, Councilman, it would be the September meeting.
And we were supposed to set up a meeting with me, city attorney, the police chief, and them to talk about the issues that were raised, and we, that never happened, so if we want to do that, so we make sure we address the chief's concerns and whatever we bring forward.
In relation to social cycle?
Yes, in relation to social cycle, and open liquor on it, right? That was what we were talking about.
Yeah, well, we, we, we talked about it at one time prior, and the instructions were to draft up the agreement.
Right, but then we had another meeting where it was discussed...
I could have missed that.
Yeah, and the chief weighed in about his concerns, so we said, we'd set up a meeting and I'd be the liaison, and we would see if we can address the concerns.
Okay.
So, we should do that, but, so...
The meeting we could do relatively quickly.
So, let's do that with the chief and them, and figure out the issues, and then we could bring council some options.
Yeah, I can take that as direction, and we can set that up for hopefully next week.
But yes, we, I totally fell off the radar, but we should, we should move that.
And, Dr. Reddy, this is one of those cases where if you can't do it, you need, if it's not doable by your staff, you need to tell us. I mean, even though we agree on it tonight, if you find, if you look at this and you decide we can't do it, your staff can't do it, let us know.
Because we're adding, we're adding animals and...
In fact, I'd like you...
And picnic tables riding down the...
I think this is where we get in trouble. We sit here and do this, and we're literally flinging more stuff at you. You're, you're not having a chance to check your bandwidth and get back with us.
Well, one thing I can say on that issue, if, if the attorney is fine with having this meeting with Councilman Corr's and the chief, and we understand the issue, then we'll know whether it's something we can bring sooner or if we have to work things out, and it'll take longer.
Great.
So, we'll do that meeting, we can do that potentially next week.
Yep, sounds fun.
But we have to do the leaf blowers because of the exchange program?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, I mean...
You'll lose the opportunity to benefit from that exchange.
It really is a, it's a $900 discount, so it takes, you know, it takes them to 200, 250, and I think 450 or 500 for the most expensive ones that are 1,400.
It's the least we can do if we're going to put in restrictions.
Right, I mean, it's a huge savings for people, if, if we decide to do anything.
Thank you, council.
Or, or $99 if they buy a vacuum.
Okay, any, any more council comments? Okay, seeing none, oh, Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, a couple of issues, you, you may remember, I commented on the landscape change at the Riviera Hotel, Vista Chino. So, come to find out that they had a staff approval for those landscape changes, and I, I have, I've got, I have an issue with staff approvals in that type of product or project or location, and staff did what they're allowed, what they're, what they're allowed to do, but we need, I think we need to let staff know or look at something to where when we've got two, such a major intersection, and there's a landscape change, maybe it's based on property, maybe it's based on location, maybe it's based on both, that it go through our process. This, to me, is not an over-the-counter change in that location, so Riviera Hotel.
It, it has ruined, it has ruined the look of the hotel.
Councilmember Mills made the comment during Councilmember's comments at the end of the meeting, that they had put in...
Oh, you were gone, that's right, you were gone.
They planted a line of ficus all around the water feature, so all you can see is just their sign. And so, the front of the hotel is hidden, the water feature is hidden.
Yeah, just went in.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Two or three weeks ago.
Yeah, it's, it's, it ruined, it ruined the whole front of the hotel.
And, and it, and, you know, and it, it, they, they had a staff approval on it. I just think that we need to, we need to, we need to define our staff approvals better to dealing with location and/or size of property, or something along that, that line. Pardon me?
There could be, we could create triggers for a substantial change to an existing approval.
But it, but that may be something that, that staff, that planning staff may not see that at the counter, where if it's hard and fast, or they look in the book and say, "Oh, I can't do that because it's at a signalized intersection," you know, I'm just throwing this out. Or it's a property that's greater than two acres or something, I mean, I don't know. But we, I, I think that, I don't know what we can do on this at this point, but it, I mean, I think it's extremely sad because it really takes a corner that was really one of our nicest corners in the, in the city and kills it, so...
Is there, is there any, let's have, stop, is there anything that we can do?
David?
At this point in time, since the approval was given back in September of 2016, it's a little bit late to call it forward, unfortunately. I don't know if the city attorney has any ideas, but there isn't any restrictions in the code or any code requirements that could make them remove it.
What if we paid them for it?
That, you could, you could negotiate an agreement with them, and probably if you help with some resources, they, they may do it.
Is there, is there an expiration date on a staff approval?
Not that I'm aware of, not for something like that.
Well, any architectural approval is two years, or...
I think it was just the landscape plan. But the two years is for exercising the approval, and since they've already exercised it, that's not an issue.
But if they exercise it after whatever that period was, then they could be...
So, I think what we're doing is requesting the city manager to maybe talk to them and tell them that the council is not particularly happy about it, and ask them if they could reconsider it, if they, if we could negotiate some agreement.
We'll get back to you with options.
Yeah, and then the, the, the other issue was, I'd like to, to call something up for, I'd like to initiate a council review. Thank you, Flynn, for the wording. It's, the, there was, there was a project, it is a, by safe access out near the Beaker Plant on the other side of the freeway. It is a grow facility of prefabricated greenhouse, which is fine, and a modular unit for their offices, et cetera. Planning Commission did not require them to do any landscaping, did not require them to do really any improvements that way. Now, part of the problem is there's no potable water source out there, they're having to provide tanks. But if they're providing tanks to water the marijuana, they can provide tanks to water some landscaping, or something. And it is a, it's a harsh area, there's no question about it.
I was going to say, we have been down this road, and I remember on the Planning Commission when we were approving something in that area, and we wanted to ask, it was a gate or something, I don't remember, Flynn, maybe you do, and it was just determined that nothing will live out there, that it's...
But it doesn't have to be, I mean, it could be, it could be a rock form with birmingham, something lives out there because there are, there is desert material out there, so, but, but to allow somebody to go in and completely just do anything, or do, or to do nothing with no improvements for a fairly good-sized facility is not, I don't think, appropriate.
Thirty thousand square foot building.
I completely agree with you, but I, what we have consistently found is to get something that can actually survive in Siberia out there.
Yeah, it has, it has to be done right, and, and, and the little caveat that, that Flynn said is that the Planning Commission gave them 18 months, was that?
Eighteen months for their modular structure.
So, they, they're, they're only approved for the modular structure for 18 months. What I'd like to see us do is, when that 18 months comes around, for them to make some kind of presentation of how to improve the site. That's simple, it doesn't make any sense to do it now, if they have a modular, so I'd like to bring it back for council discussion.
An 18 months?
I'm okay with that, but if you're giving direction of, of asking for some landscape solution to come back, you're also saying it doesn't necessarily have to be foliage, but it can just be rock, I mean, is that...
It could be just some type of improvement.
Okay, okay, so that's kind of important in the direction.
So, is this to bring it back in 18 months, or bring it back now?
At the time, they have to replace the modular unit.
That they bring back the land, the plan.
So, they'll be making a permanent facility. So, when the permanent facility happens, you know, they're going to have to deal with parking, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Why don't we just take the walls down and have a beautiful marijuana forest?
Yeah, well, it would kind of liven that into town, wouldn't it?
Or deaden it.
It'd make a lot of people happy.
Okay, is there any, any other issues, or anything else to dump on the city manager?
Yeah, you want more from us, Doctor?
Remember, Dr. Reddy, these are suggestions, and if there's something you think just won't work, let us know. Okay?
We need to get a thank you from Jamie for the, all the money we've saved him in air conditioning.
Okay, can we adjourn, please?
Yes.
Okay, city council, adjourn to the next regular meeting Wednesday, July 19th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m., preceded by a closed session at Palm Springs Convention Center, Primo's B, 2077 North Avenue Caballeros, Palm Springs. Thank you.